Michelle, are we ready? Okay. Excellent. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to bring to order tonight's meeting, Wednesday, February 6, 2019, the meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. As first item of our agenda, I'd ask everyone to rise for Commissioner Olivas to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle, can I have roll call, please?
Grayton Griffith, present. Peter Gower.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
John Marshall.
Here.
Paul Olivas.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is Item 3, Public Comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Just a reminder for those of you in the audience, if you care to make a public comment on this item or any items, please see Michelle and fill out one of these forms. Under this item, I have a request to speak from Tammy Holtstill.
Hi, Tammy Holtstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee for the record. The water is still there and rising, and we are still here. I know that you have an item on the agenda. I know that it's instead, which is more draining towards Silver Lake, but we do know that there is a hydrology report that will be out in September, a complete hydrology report. They are also looking at including Silver Lake, and as far as I can see, it comes back to, again, anything that is done in that area has to go to the sewer plant that we all know has issues. We know where it drains, too. We know that it has very minimal hookups, and that it's time to put the brakes on for a little bit to try and figure out how to fix the situation before moving forward. So that is my suggestion for you guys, is to say, you know, upzoning, rezoning, none of this needs to happen until you know exactly what you've got going on out there. That lake is bad. There are pumps now taking water from one field to another field and then over to the field that's always been underwater. And that field is only about this far away from the water coming onto Lemon Drive, which means then Lemon Drive will be closed. So there's a lot of issues out there that have to be addressed, and I know the city of Reno is not the only culprit in this, but we need, we need the city of Reno or somebody to say, okay, let's take a timeout, let's change this. Let's, let's change it. Chivi said it great last night, Mayor Chivi said it the best, it's time to challenge one another to do the right things, instead of just letting things slide by. Got to stop. So let's try and figure out how to do that together. And Danny, I hope you're feeling better. Bye.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Anyone else wishing to make a comment under General Public Comment? Seeing none, I will close that, bring it back to the agenda for Item Number 4, Approval of the Minutes. Looking for approval of the minutes from the Wednesday, December 19 City Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Gower will move to approve.
Commissioner Weiskie, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and now I'm looking for approval of the minutes from the January 3 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Weiskie.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Commissioner Griffith abstaining.
Thank you very much. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to Item Number 5, City Council Liaison Reports.
I do not have anything from Councilwoman Weber.
Can I try that again when you're not drinking? Would that be helpful?
All right, you just.
Sorry to catch you at inopportune time. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Item Number 6, Public Hearings. We will start with Item Number LDC 19-00022, Steamboat Repower Project. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. We did conduct a workshop with you just a few weeks back, so our presentation is not a complete presentation of all the materials that we went over at the workshop. We felt that that was a very productive meeting. We really appreciate staff for pushing the project in that direction. So our presentation tonight is a little bit abridged to cover a few of the items that maybe we touched on or came up in some of the NAB comments. Just to reiterate what this request is, this is, this includes special use permits for development of a major utility, hillside development, cuts and fills, so cuts over 20 feet, fills over 10 feet, hazardous materials associated with the binary power generation of the geothermal facility, a variance to eliminate the landscaping requirements. This does trigger projects of regional significance for electric generation greater than 5 megawatts, as well as electric substation and geothermal power generation facility. Caveat to the electric substation, that also does trigger a regional plan amendment. It's adjacent to a regional utility corridor, and that utility corridor would need to be amended to add that substation into it. The property is located in the Redfield Regional Center, just to the south of the TMCC UNR Redfield Campus, and is within the proximity of the existing geothermal complex that ORMAT operates in that area. This is a little bit more detailed look. Really, we're just looking at the southern of this 112-acre parcel, looking at the southern, about 26 acres down here. This is proposed to be a 30-megawatt binary air-cooled geothermal facility, uses a pentane gas as the working fluid that vaporizes and creates the steam to turn the electric turbines. That pentane gas is the subject of the hazardous material special use permit. This is replacing an existing 10-megawatt steam-driven plant, which is the Steamboat Hills plant up there. That's actually located in the county. It'll be decommissioned and demolished, and many of the, much of the metal scrapped. That is the facility that you see the large cloud in the sky, so that cloud and things like that will go away. This will utilize two existing production wells on existing pad sites. The site utilizes an existing disturbed area that was a former mining site, so this, we tried to limit the amount of disturbance that could occur on throughout the property, either owned or controlled by ORMAT. On the property, on the figure above, shows the pad area. The cut areas would be revegetated with a dryland revegetation. The access road is existing up to the site. A new access road will be constructed up to an existing well pad over on this side. It does connect into an existing 120-kV transmission facility, which is here, a little difficult to see. Here is that new substation that would be added into that existing utility corridor. One of the items that we discussed, the workshop, and also came up in your NAB comments, was concerns about noise. The nearest residential to this is the Galena Hills subdivision, which is in the county to the west of us, about 4,300 feet away, or .83 miles. In between that, which the site is right here, that kind of scarred area, there's a large ridgeline in there that really substantially blocks any sound or views, for that matter, going into the site. Then the nearest residential in the city to the east is over a mile and a half away in Curdy Ranch, and some additional county residential to the, to the east as well, over a mile away with Interstate 580 that goes in between. Talking with ORMAT, they've gone through acoustical studies on other plants, and we consulted with their acoustical engineer on some of those other projects. He looked at this, and based upon the size of this plant and the knowledge of what the noise output is from them, it's anticipated that the noise will be dissipated to 49 decibels, which is the city of Reno's nighttime standard, at 4,000 feet from the site. Condition Number 11 addresses this and requires, requires us to kind of prove that out before any building permits can be approved. Just to give you an idea of what that 4,000-foot radius looks like, really, it's all vacant land or existing geothermal production area with a little bit of some commercial and that campus up here being, being in that 4,000-foot radius. That's on flatland that we'd be concerned. Obviously, there's a lot of topography here, and those hillsides will help to block a lot of that noise as well. Tree disturbance, they're existing, there's an existing stand of some pine trees up there. Oops. Oops. I jumped ahead. Those trees are located, that will be disturbed, are located in a bowl area, which is where the plant is primarily located. There's a large pit out there that was part of the old mining activities. We did have an arborist perform a survey to identify whether they're pinion or Jeffrey pines, as well as to identify any, any trees that would be prime for relocation. We have a condition Number 12 in the staff report that requires us to work with staff and the urban forester on mitigation measures prior to any building permits. I do want to add, you know, while we are impacting some trees in this lower bowl area, they're really not visible from the surrounding area. What is visible from, say, I-580 is this stand of trees on kind of the lower slope in front of the, the site, as well as the stand of trees that sit up on the hillside above it. So when you're looking up at it, you kind of have trees in the foreground, trees in the background, that help really to screen that facility. We did request a variance. Variance has had been previously supported by the city of Reno and other geothermal plants in the area. Their existing site soils out there, which was supported by the state, basically is not conducive to non-native plant species, and it's actually better if we don't have that irrigation out there, because there is some endangered species in the area, not specifically in, in this area, but there's endangered buckwheat, steamboat buckwheat in the area that they did not want any irrigation water impacting. There's also no viable permanent source of water to irrigate that landscaping, so that makes it very significant hardships to provide non-native plant species and get them to survive. Additionally, really, the primary function of landscaping is for screening, and as we shared at the workshop, with a viewshed analysis, there really are limited views into the site from the surrounding area, and really, the function of that landscaping, we don't feel would really be anything that would be necessary. One of the other items that came up, I think Commissioner Marshall had asked a question about existing trails that are behind Galena High School. So looking at that trail that's behind Galena High School here, I highlighted it in yellow. Did see some people out there walking. Again, it, there's a, there's the large hillside ridgeline here. There's a series of hills, hills through here that actually screen that. The next slide will give you a little view of that. In addition, we have a condition Number 8 that's in your staff report that requires us to work with Public Works and Community Development, to see if we can come up with a plan to enhance some of the trails in the area. We do, we are required by code, because of the mixed-use zoning, to pay 1% of the construction budget towards pedestrian amenities or towards the city's pedestrian fund. So you're looking at that existing trail here, which I believe is actually an emergency access road that's kind of doubles as a trail. You see, you know, hillsides kind of in between that, and then I kind of highlighted, you can see the little scar area. This is obviously looking from, you know, 10,000 feet, just to give you a perspective of how, how much that is screened on the other side of those hillsides there. With that, we appreciate staff's recommendation. We are in agreement with the staff report and the conditions as they were presented, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Andy. We'll hear from staff and let you know if we have any questions.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Chair Johnson, Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record. First off, just, you do all have a memorandum in front of you detailing a few clarifications of the staff report, specifically, the first one being the motions. The case number was wrong. Instead of 18, it should be 19. As far as the legal requirements?
Yeah, you're looking.
Oh, golly.
Strike that.
Sir, I apologize. Golly.
Don't worry, Brooke, we'll let you start that one over.
Let, let's, yeah, let's do this again. Okay. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record.
Excellent. Good evening.
And slightly embarrassed at this point. The applicant did go over this and addressed a few of those things that were brought up in the last meeting, as, as was stated, the, the applicant has, oh, excuse me, now, now, let me grab my parents again. We have worked with the applicant on a number of these items, and I think you have a, between the workshop and what was presented from Andy, have a good sense of where this were. The two things that were brought up at the last Planning Commission, Andy touched on them briefly, one being the, the mixed-use requirement for a pedestrian, 1% to be pedestrian amenity. We do have a condition that does first state that they, they need to work with staff, Public Works, and also look at potentially SHPO to provide amenities. The intent of that is to have those amenities as closely related to that project site, and that area is unique in nature, and to be able to do that. The mixed-use RMC, Reno Municipal Code does allow for and in lieu of, and, and so if we do not find a viable sort of solution or alternative out there, there would be in lieu of that they would commit to a fund on that. Secondly, one of the other concerns was the construction, limited time construction that was limited by potential of mule deer population in that area. The applicant has reached out to the Nevada Fish and Wildlife, and they have confirmed, they discussed the project and how it was, how it would proceed, and the, they released that limitation on time on that. That is included in the staff report, and that letter is included in the staff report on that. With, with that, staff, once again, can make all the applicable findings and does recommend approval of the portion of the project on this, and recommend approval of the hazardous, recommend the recommendation of approval of hazardous materials to City Council. Staff is available for questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Before I open this up for any public comment, I will bring you back for the Commission for Disclosures, starting with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, no disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Griffith, I visited all of the sites that are mentioned, and I also met with the applicant, applicant's representative, and staff.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower, I toured the site with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Weiskie, I met with the applicant's representatives.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up for public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
Not for this item.
So anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for Questions. Who'd like to get us started? Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Andy and the crew that gave us a tour of the plant and the facilities out there. It made it a lot easier to look at my package and make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions or discussion? Mr. Gower, more motion?
I was going to go ahead and make a motion, but.
That's right. I was trying to go for it, Mr. Marshall. I guess he turned, he turned his microphone. Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought.
Commissioner Marshall.
Based upon compliance with the, excuse me, in the matter of LDC 19-00022, Steamboat Repower Project, based upon compliance with applicable special use permit and variance findings and recommended conditions of approval, I move to approve the special use permits for A) development of a major utility, B) hillside development, C) cuts of 20 feet or greater in depth and fills greater than 10 feet in height, and D) a variance for removal of formal landscape and Planning Commission, oh, excuse me, for removal of formal landscape, and that Planning Commission recommend, this is a weird motion.
Hold on for just a second, Commissioner Marshall. I'm going to check with legal on this. On the back page of our staff report, it appears there's three separate motions. Is that how you would like us to handle this?
So rather than the front page?
Yes, because there's a possibility there may be an objection to one of those three items, and so we'd want independent votes.
My apologies.
But we suggest that.
Okay. Thank you.
In the case of LDC 19-00022, Steamboat Repower, based upon compliance with the applicable findings and considerations, I move to approve the special use permits for A) development of a major utility, B) hillside development, C) cuts of 20 feet or greater in depth and fills greater than 10 feet in height.
Yeah, thank you. So I have a motion for the special use permit.
Mr. Gower, I'll second that, and I can make all the findings.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Marshall, would you like to keep going?
I'll keep going. In the case of LDC 19-00022, Steamboat Repower, based upon compliance with applicable findings and considerations, I move to approve the variance for removal of the requirement for a formal landscape area.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion, looking for a second.
Mr. Gower, I'll second.
Motion second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
In the case of LDC 19-00022, Steamboat Repower, based upon compliance with applicable findings and considerations, I move to recommend that the City Council approve the special use permit for a facility that manufactures, processes, transfers, or stores hazardous substances.
Okay, thank you. Motion?
Mr. Gower, I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, I'm going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and that would be Case Number LDC 19-00029, Stead, North Virginia Zone Change. And just as informational to the audience, we can work really hard to hear what's going on, so if you have a conversation, please take it outside, and it's not involved with what's going on here. Thank you very much. So with that, the applicant for Item 6.2, John, welcome.
Thank you. I'm the applicant's rep. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners John Krompottic, representing Stead Self-Storage, who's the applicant for this zone change. In summary, this is a zone change, zoning map amendment, from MU in the North Virginia Transit Corridor to Industrial Commercial, 5.95-acre site, and it's composed of four parcels in that location. There is some context to what's going on surrounding the area. I think it's fair and appropriate to say that on this side of 395, that would be the south. It's not a very well-planned area. Certainly, there's a lot of effort that way, and the master plan, I think, is, is working very much in directing some more appropriate planning in this location, but it's kind of bit, a little bit hodgepodgey. There it is, a little more zoom. There's a private access road adjacent to the site, Matthews Lane on the north, Cottage Grooming, the Mobile Home Park, and then on the east, as noted in the staff report, is a bar right there at the southeast corner of the property. Co Part is over there, kind of kitty corner to the southwest. The commission, of course, knows better than I, what went on directly to the south, which was a zone change to IC, and I understand there's a distribution warehouse under construction, and then further to the west, vacant land across Stead Boulevard. Notice the block there, that is interesting, this, the existing master plan, per Reimagine Reno, conforming zoning districts to the industrial land use are industrial, industrial, commercial, and PUD. So we're actually asking for industrial, commercial, where the existing is not conforming to that land use. So there it is. And there's proposed. A little bit more, I always like to share some photos with the commission, if you didn't have a chance to look at the site in detail. There's looking north on Stead Boulevard, the site is at the corner to the right there. There's Matthews Street, directs traffic to the residential further down the road there to the left, which is the Mobile Home Park, and then on the right is the site, again, composed of the almost six acres. Virginia Street, that's looking due north, just parked on the side of the road there, gives you, again, some perspective there. And that's all I have for those slides. I do have my own analysis of the master plan policy support. You can see staff offered a strong support. Of course, we appreciate that, or in agreement with it as written. I think there's five or six policies that point that the master plan, this is in conformance with, in the master plan, and then I have detailed analysis of findings as well, if you'd like me to go through those to support any of the staff analysis, so thank you. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, John. We'll let you know after we hear a presentation from staff. Kyle, good evening.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, Commissioners Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the Record. So John did a thorough overview of the project requests. Essentially, you have four parcels being requested for a zoning map amendment from the mixed-use North Virginia Street Transit Corridor Overlay District to Industrial Commercial District. As John stated, the, and I'll put up another map. The current city of Reno master plan land use designation is industrial. The IC zoning request is in conformance with the industrial land use designation. The change, I do, I just would note that the change would allow for a wider range of industrial uses, which was planned, anticipated with the master plan update to industrial, as well as the IC district also still allows for some commercial uses that are allowed in the current mixed-use zoning district. It's been identified that some commercial availability for zoning would be appropriate here to provide those services to the area. That being said, this project was heard at the Ward for NAB on January 19. Comments received were in general support of the request. Staff did not receive any calls or emails, and I, staff can make all the applicable findings and recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the City Council for this zoning map amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kyle. Again, this is a public hearing, but before I open it up for public comment, I'll ask the Commissioners for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Weiskie. I visited the site.
Commissioner Hawkins visited the site, talked to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Griffith, no disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site.
Thank you. So this is a public comment. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forms? I'm actually, Claudia, please jump in.
Claudia, it's the Plenary Manager. Jennifer Spade? Are you in the room? You put down that you want to comment on this, but I'm thinking about your address, you meant the next item. Okay, thank you. You, case number 29, it's 26, it's 26. I'll change it for you.
No problem, we'll get you soon. So is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for Questions. We'd like to get us started. Commissioner Weiskie?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Commissioners, is there any discussion prior to that point? I believe you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of LDC 19-00029, Stead, North Virginia Zone Change, based upon complaints with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all of the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a motion, looking for a second?
Commissioner Hawkins, second. I can make the findings.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda. Item Number 6.3, Case Number LDC-00026, Rio Wrangler North Zone Change. And we will start with a presentation from the applicant's representative. Ooh, didn't even know he was in the room at this point. Andy, as you know, we run a very tight shipper out here, so.
Yes. So sorry. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant for the Rio Wrangler North Zone Change. This is a zone change on two parcels totaling 189 acres. As you can see in the aerial on the left exhibit, it is an existing aggregate pit. There are a couple aggregate pits out in the area. This is one that is getting close to being extinguished and will be remediated and basically taken back to a level grades. There is a future planned extension of South Meadows Parkway, so South Meadows Parkway currently dead ends right at Steamboat Creek. That roadway has sewer trunk main in it that is stubbed in order to be extended across. Additionally- um, that is stubbed in order to be extended across. Uh, additionally, there is, uh, water facilities in what is, we'll call it the, the dirt road portion of Rio Wrangler. Uh, I think it's on some maps, it's also referred to as Miraloma Hall Route. Um, so that dirt road has a sixteen-inch, um, Tumla water main in it, so, uh, this property is in the city of Reno. Um, giving you a little bit broader perspective here, it's identified in green, so this is sort of a, you see the developed portions of, um, Damani Ranch, Double Diamond, Bella Vista down here. Um, this is a logical extension of that single-family, um, single-family in, in that area. Um, this property is identified in, in Reimagine Reno as a single-family neighborhood. Um, it allows for densities between two and eight dwelling units per acre. The, uh, requested SF six or single-family six thousand square foot zoning, uh, is a compatible zoning, and actually, uh, the existing zoning of, of large lot residential, two point five acre, is not in conformance with the underlying master plan, so this will, uh, bring it better into conformance with the master plan that you all adopted, uh, last year. This property is, is not within a floodplain, uh, on, as what's shown on, um, uh, the right exhibit here. Uh, you'll see the floodplain, um, is identified in, in the blue there predominantly. This is outside of that floodplain and, uh, really is unencumbered land that is prime for development at this time. Uh, the change in zoning, really, we're just concentrating, there is a mix of some, uh, a little bit of large lot resident, or I'm sorry, there's predominantly large lot residential, about a hundred and fifty-six, a hundred and fifty acres, and then about forty acres of, uh, UT forty, which is unincorporated transition forty-acre, uh, zoning. Um, so that's kind of, there's some remnants there. So we're just looking at that yellow area, which is that existing LLR two point five, uh, going to the, again, the compatible SF six zoning, uh, to bring it in conformance with the master plan. Just to give a little primer, uh, I know there was, uh, you, you received some, uh, several emails, uh, questioning kind of the, the timeliness of this. Um, just to kind of give you the hierarchy of how we, uh, approach applications of this nature. Um, at the first highest level, Reimagine Reno Master Plan, that is the, the master plan that you all adopted last year. It establishes a broad vision for the city and it, and then identifies a series of goals and policies to help achieve that vision. It also establishes land uses that are, uh, allow for ranges of zoning. Um, in this particular case, we're not asking for any changes to the, uh, master plan designations. Uh, we're asking to utilize zoning that is compatible, uh, with the underlying master plan that you all approved. The next level down is, uh, the zoning map. Uh, the zoning is in ord- ordinance adopted to establish densities and intensities of the land use. Um, it must support and conform with the master plan, which this request does. Um, it cannot address individual project impacts, and it does not allow for immediate development of the property, so, um, for us to move forward with construction or, or an actual development plan, there needs to be another step, uh, which is a public process, um, that we would, uh, then have to go through after we go through this zoning map amendment. So we can't, um, we can't address a lot of the infrastructure, uh, concerns, traffic concerns, things like that, until we get through this process. Um, the zoning map process also cannot be conditioned, it isn't a lot, does not allow you to put conditions on for future, um, use of this property. The next step after we get through this would be the tentative map process, so in order to create a subdivision, um, to utilize that SF six zoning, uh, we would need to submit a tentative map. T tentative maps are required for, uh, anything proposing more than four lots. Um, we, um, may not submit that until the zoning is in place, so this is kind of a, a step-by-step process. Um, that tentative map then describes, this is a specific development plan for the property. It is regula- regulated by the city zoning code, and then it also requires us to, um, submit preliminary engineering design of infrastructure as well as a traffic analysis at that time that is specific to the actual use and, um, intensity of the use that is proposed. That tentative map can then be conditioned to appropriately mitigate any potential impacts, um, that the project mayor may cause, um, to the immediate and surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, with that, um, that ends our presentation. I, um, if I can, Mr. Chairman, if I can reserve the, uh, remainder of my ten minutes, um, for any rebuttal, um, from public comment, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Hold it ten minutes for you there, Andy. Brooke, welcome back.
Let's see if I can get it right this time. Uh, Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record. Uh, first off, just some bookkeeping. Uh, there were some clarifications i- in the staff report I'd like to go through first. Uh, for the, uh, zoning amendment map, uh, the recommendations to approve or deny, uh, recommendation to city council, there's the error that, from eighteen to nineteen, the legal requirements should read as follows, uh, which is the NRS two, two seven, two five, zero, two, uh, zoning districts and regulations, and then the findings, uh, for the, uh, zoning map amendment are provided below. So just, uh, a number of, uh, public, uh, emails have been received on this. Staff has, um, uh, cut, and also had several discussions on the phone and, uh, through direct emails with people, uh, that had concerns or questions about the site. Uh, one of the main questions I did is, that I would like to clarify first off, is, uh, the project location. I think with the recent, uh, Bella Vista Ranch Phase Two, there was confusion of where this development was and how that was with the different signing and posting and how that was, so I would like to just, um, clarify that very quickly. Actually. The master, the master plan land designation, um, shows it a little bit more clearly. So the Bella Vista Rage, uh, Phase Two, Bella Vista Ranch Phase Two PUD, the Planned Unit Development, which is entitled, is the section with the blue striped here. Um, that was what was before you, about a month ago. Uh, the project that we're speaking of is a, a rezoning, um, of the large lot residential two point five to the, um, single-family, um, six thousand square foot lot. So just a clarification for everyone of where that is, there were a number of questions about that and what project was what. There is currently no development project with this, as Andy, um, clearly showed kind of the process that goes through there. This is just for the zoning at this time. I think another thing that, that is, um, uh, necessary to, um, to make everyone aware of is, this is currently an active aggregate pit. It has been, as you can see, the disturbance area is the, uh, primarily almost the entire site. There has been disturbed. Uh, we currently don't, it doesn't show the Veterans Parkway coming in at this point, but you can start to see the, uh, the floodway and, uh, wetland mitigation happening here off to the site. And that this, um, just to note that this is a highly disturbed site. Um, and as you, uh, can also see, as, um, development is getting closer and closer, the compatibility of that, uh, with the residential you'd uses of truck traffic, dust, noise, and everything else, there starts to become a conflict in that. Ad- additionally, traffic, uh, was, was one of the major concerns that we received a lot of the letters on. Um, there, there's initial, um, traffic estimate that was calculated from, uh, the proposed, um, uh, density that could happen there, uh, with the, uh, plus or minus a hundred and fifty acres, uh, approximately, uh, with the SF six zoning, it is estimated that a thousand and ninety homes could be built. Uh, that would be the max, and so there, there was a max, uh, daily average trips that generated from staff on that. Uh, we do have en- engineering staff here if there are additional, uh, questions on, um, on traffic. Uh, the other major concern that I noted in those, uh, was the horse, the access, that area being used by, uh, the feral horses on the Virginia Range there. Uh, I had several phone calls and also additional emails. Um, as, as was stated, as we went through with the Bella Vista Ranch, um, the city is working with the horse advocates and developers and, and continuing to work through that at the zoning phase. Uh, this is not something we would currently address. It would be that tentative map, the direction being, uh, that building the, uh, sort of perimeter fence prior to any construction, any cattle guards going at that point, uh, being negotiated to be removed at some point when they're no longer necessary. And then also that fence line being taken care of by the HO, an HOA, or the appropriate private landowner. Um, with that, um, I am available for additional questions. Uh, staff can make all the findings and does recommend approval of the zoning amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brooke. Uh, again, this is a public hearing, so, uh, as soon as I get done with disclosures, starting with, uh, Commissioner Olivas, we'll open it up for public comment.
Uh, Commissioner Olivas, no disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Griffith, I received emails. I visited the site. I had a meeting with staff, and I grew up just up the street.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative, read a few emails, actually, a lot of emails. Spoke with a couple members of the public.
Mr. Gower, I visited the site, uh, corresponded with the applicant's representative, uh, corresponded with, uh, a member of the public, and received and read the emails.
Mr. Hawkins visited the site, talked with the applicant's representative, received about seventeen emails, corresponded to two.
Commissioner Wieski, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative, and read all the emails that were forwarded to me.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, again, as I mentioned before, if you'd like to make a comment on this, please see Michelle to fill out one of these forms, and I'm just gonna read through the items and put my initial comment here that I apologize for any mispronunciations of your names. So we will start with Judy Covert, followed by Grisha Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Judy Covert.
And if you can move the microphone down and speak into that, that'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Judy Covert, and I live at one oh one oh five Gold Mine Drive, and I'm here tonight regarding this rezoning. Um, I live in Ward Two, so this project is technically not in Ward Two. It's in Ward Three. However, it will impact us when the future extension to Rio Wrangler is, is completed up to South Meadows Parkway. The developer has proposed in their, um, zoning request, a thousand and ninety homes on about a hundred and fifty acres. This is gonna cause a huge increase for people going from the new area to the Damani Ranch High School, and those of us living in the south part of, uh, the area, for those people taking their children to Bell, the new Bella Vista. The, as I believe I heard, um, the zoning can be two to eight dwelling units per acre. This is calculated at seven point five. That's maybe, if we figure ten trips a day, that's ten thousand nine hundred trips per day. There is, I understand, another application coming from this developer for approval i- in the next few months for another eighteen hundred and eighty-eight additional homes. On page one eighty-seven of your staff report, um, it does say that the fire department has, um, concerns about servicing this area. Um, I'm also concerned, confused about, um, the checklist on the application for projects of regional significance. I don't understand how, when you're talking this many units and, um, this many daily trips, how it can't be a project of regional significance. Maybe I just don't understand the wording. But I'm here tonight to ask you to deny this, um, application until the RTC study that is underway for our whole southeast area is completed. It's already started. Um, there's gonna be public input on that study in the next two, um, two months. And I would ask that until this is done, that no more rezone or, uh, development projects be approved. Thank you.
Grisha Gonzalez, followed by Tanya Tavkar.
I think she's right here. She lives there, and she says she's opposing it, but she's afraid to get up right now, so.
So I have a note here that says she wishes to make a statement, but, and is in opposition, so if she doesn't want to speak, then we'll just moat her opposition.
She lives there in that area, and she doesn't want anybody building.
Okay, so I've got that down as a, a statement in opposition. Uh, Tanya Tavkar? Followed by Valerie Truce.
Hi again, my name is Tanya Tavkar, and I totally oppose this. Um, first of all, there's lead around that area, lead contamination. Who wants to live there? It's a wetlands. Again, who wants to live there? I mean, it's just.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Okay, could you hear what I said? Okay, good. Okay, um, like I said, there's lead around there. They have signs saying lead contamination. Um, we know we've studied before that there's arsenic in the water. There's flood zones. Why? It's a damn shame. Why would you want to come in here and start building? Um, I'm actually a wild horse advocate. I love the horses. I'm speaking on behalf of the wild horse advocates too. And we'd like to save a little land for the horses. Um, there's so much land that's already been taken away from them. Um, and, you know, now they're, they want to go in the wetlands. I just don't understand this, and take it away. Um, it's a damn shame. Please do not allow building there. Um, this is just a little bit of true wild left for the horses. And, um, you know, again, I just oppose it. I, I just don't understand, when there's so many other places to build, why do they have to come in there? And then once there's a little bit built, and gets a little more and a little more, you know, this, there's people that ride their bikes out there, walk their dogs out there, horses, coyotes, you know, just, I mean, it's, it's just a beautiful area. Why not save at least a little bit? You know, just a little bit, and let them go build somewhere else. There's plenty of places to build, you know, elsewhere. So, um, thank you very much.
Valerie Truce, followed by Colt Stewart.
As I told Grisha, this is the most painful thing we ever do, is speak in public, and if you haven't done it in a long time, it's really nerve-wracking. Um, good evening, planning commissioners. I would like to focus on the staff report and the impact such a large project will have on our future. Certainly, you can understand, a thousand new homes off of Rio Wrangler is going to have a negative impact. The developers are posing lots as small as six thousand feet. And although my home sits on fifteen hundred square feet, I wanted to show you the difference. This is, can you see that? This is my neighborhood. We sit on lots of fifteen hundred square feet, or a third of an acre, which is really pretty small. Fifteen thousand, thank you. Fifteen thousand square feet, which is adequate, um, for us. These are on Gold Mine. And look at, I wish I had them smaller, so I could show you the difference in, in one picture. Look at how much.
I need you to look, you can move this over with.
Okay. There we go. This is my neighborhood. A little wider street, not as much crowding, fifteen thousand square foot lots. This is, was built last year, very close to Damani High School. Eight thousand square foot lots. When you drive down there on the weekends, it's really hard to get through that street because the driveways are so short and the garages are so small that everyone has to park on the street. I took this this morning after everybody went to work, so it doesn't truly show you how much congestion there is with eight thousand square feet lots. Creating six thousand square feet lots will only create madman congestion and urban sprawl. Of the hundred and eighty-nine acres requesting rezoning, only five acres are being asked for, for a park. Of the other parks mentioned in the staff report, only one is possibly within a half a mile. Cyan Park. I believe the Bella Vista four-acre passive park is actually a walking or biking path. The other parks are not easily accessible by foot traffic, possibly leaving thousands, two thousand three hundred, of residents to congest the five-acre park we're asking for, or to drive to another playground. The staff report states, we'll be providing four percent of needed Reno housing, twenty-three hundred residents to be squished into teeny tiny spaces, when the highest demand for housing, according to the staff report, will be within two to seven buildings per acre. Could we be creating urban sprawl when it's not even necessary? Overall, I am disappointed in the staff report. Despite fire and police concerns, no word from the school district, no accommodation for alternative energy sources, and the only secondary eager says being. for alternative energy sources, and the only secondary acres is being Alexander Lake Road, a twisty turny road with no shoulders, to the north, and Steamboat Parkway, miles to the south, staff is still requesting approval of this project. With the understanding the planning commission can either approve or deny the project, I request the project be denied. Developers can return with changes more appropriate and reflective of our community, and less reflective of avarice and urban sprawl. The city of Reno, the city of trembling leaves, is a beautiful community. Let's do everything we can to keep it that way while we grow. Thank you.
Colt Stewart, followed by Jim Lewis.
My name's Colt Stewart, I live on Barrel Razor Drive in the Golden Hills Park. Does anybody here live in this area? Any of you guys, folks? Yeah. So if a thousand units go into the end of Rio Wrangler, and where South Meadows hits, and you have ten thousand trips a day, out and back, that makes twenty thousand total trips, there's just no infrastructure for that. There's no physical infrastructure in the way of streets and whatnot, and to think that the planning for this is going to be done, you know, a year from now, or some other time, is ridiculous. I mean, we're getting, you know, you guys have the big picture, so you get to look at the whole city, the whole region, the whole... In our little area, I mean, I don't know, you know, if you're down there day and night, but it's fun to try to drive around there at different times of the day. In the morning, of course, on Rio Wrangler, trying to get off of Hee Haw, or off of Steamboat, onto Rio Wrangler, is a real challenge, and trying to get through different intersections in there, because everybody's going to the high school, everybody's dropping kids off, leaving, going back from the high school, and then at different times of the day, you've got elementary schools, you've got intermediate schools, you've got things all over this region that require people driving in and out of those things, not just school buses, but moms and dads making, dropping off their kids. And police and fire, nobody's even mentioned that, that we don't have, I've never seen, I've been here now two and a half years, I've never seen a sheriff or a policeman on our street, ever. And I've heard that once in a while, they go on Steamboat, or Carrot, or one of those streets, but you just, unless you live there and deal with this stuff, day in and day out, and night in and night out, you just don't realize the impact of having all of this residential development put in the same place. And of course, the trick is, these guys come in with a one-house-per-two-and-a-half-acre deal, like they did to the east of Golden Hills, and then they come back with a, oh, let's put seven houses on an acre, and it just, you know, that's sort of insane when you think about it. You talk about being mad about all these people coming in and making traffic problems, all the rest of it, well, you guys are the ones doing that. And so I really ask you to hold off, and send us to the NAB. It hasn't even gone before the NAB yet. So let us have a chance to look at it on a neighborhood level. Thanks.
Jim Lewis, followed by Denise Lewis.
Denise didn't put in to speak.
See that? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim Lewis. I live on Trail Rider Drive in the Golden Hills community. My background includes a bachelor's science in architecture from New York Institute of Technology. I worked in that field for about ten years, so I've worked with planning and zoning commissions and things like that in the past. I had a lot of stuff prepared, but I'm a little blown away by the presentation saying that they're required to get rezoning before you do any kind of traffic study and impact study to the area. That just kind of threw me a little bit off there. And then you hear things like trips per day, and things like that, and these people making these calculations, density, master plan, the reimagine, we don't get what's being reimagined in our area, because it's hurting our area tremendously. So what I did is, you know, my background is, is I understand some of these numbers a little better, but to the residents in our community, they don't really understand. So what those people do is they do Google searches. So I did one for you, and this one, I did, all they Googled was "city planning." So it came up tons of information on city planning. So this one here just says, "Basic intention of town planning is to satisfy the needs of future generations to prevent the disorganized growth of a town or a city." Pretty simple, right? So there's all, seven, eight, nine, ten things on all these different articles. The one that interests our community is titled, "Road Systems." Road network hierarchy is very important while building a town or a city. The efficiency of the town is measured by the layout of its roads. The provisions of a faulty road system in the initial stages of town formation provides to be difficult and costly to repair, rearrange in the future. So basically, what we've discussed here in front of this panel before is, I don't like to be negative, but the mistakes that have been made in our community. The mistake number one was locating the high school on the edge of town. There's no planning anywhere that says that's the right way to do it. I understand the land was donated, but it's up to the people at these councils and the city council to make the right decisions. The second thing is the width of Rio Wrangler itself. We were here in two thousand seventeen, January, to fight for our neighborhood, putting in a charter school. We found out from planning and engineering that that roadway right there between Steamboat and high school doesn't meet the standard at that point in time. Since then, they've opened up the daycare, and they've added to the high school and made it worse. Now they've lowered the density above our community, and now they're adding more houses. These things need to be looked at. It's really, one of the other person commented, it's insane. You can't even make this stuff up. Thanks a lot.
Okay, so Denise Lewis does not wish to make a statement, is in opposition, please help us with traffic issues in our community. Next is Jennifer Spade, followed by Tracy Wilson.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Spade, and I live at nine eight eight five Cardigan Bay Lane in Reno, and I oppose the request for this rezoning for a couple of reasons, and I want to explain The developer is talking about the fact that they want to conform with the master plan, and the master plan actually, in the Q and A section of Reimagine Reno, dated October two thousand seventeen, states that it is important to note that the update to the city of Reno master plan will not change zoning, the zoning of any parcel. In some small instances, zoning changes may need to be considered. Well, in my view, small instances suggest that they should rarely have rezoning requests approved. Also, in the single-family category, there are different ones. There's the SF nine, which is nine thousand square feet, and then there's also SF fifteen. So that would also satisfy, so the woman who came up and talked about her neighborhood at being an SF fifteen approximately, that would also satisfy the master plan, even though it doesn't, even though a change may take place. This has been talked about a lot, but there's inadequacies on the studies on the regional impact. A thousand homes, we've talked about the traffic, we didn't talk about the school overcrowding. We just paid as homeowners and residents within Reno, an increase in taxes to pay for some of the school overcrowding and the building of that. That's a huge issue. A thousand, potentially over a thousand homes, is going to produce a lot of children needing to go to school. Also, too, the need for, which is part of the Reno reimagine plan, too, the need for responsible and well-managed growth. So the plan, in quotes, "We desire stability for the future and seek to minimize speculative markets, like the one that made us particularly vulnerable to the Great Recession." Well, changing, going from one home to two and a half acres to eighteen homes for two and a half acres, eighteen times, is what this developer is asking for in this area. And also part of the location, it talks about, in all the zoning, because I've really spent a lot of time reading up on the zonings here in Reno, and it talks about the transition. So putting something that's so dense, close to a transition up into the mountains and unincorporated areas, was against what the reimagine plan was looking at. And then lastly, the market is changing. I mean, we're seeing now with the increase in interest rates, the fact that there's a drop of about ten point three percent, and I'll close by this. I applaud that the fact that they're going to convert a gravel pit into housing, and I just don't support doing six thousand square feet, and I ask you to deny it. Thank you.
Tracy Wilson, followed by Jessica Simkins.
Good evening. I am Tracy Wilson. I live in Demone Ranch, across the street from the high school. I am also a volunteer with Hidden Valley Wild Horse Protection Fund, and I'm sorry to come up here and be in front of you all again and repeat myself. With just three minutes, I'm going to address a couple of things quickly. I agree with a lot of what's been said. I feel that addressing the traffic issues after you've decided on the lot sizes is a little bit backwards. We do have, there's a lot that gets said about Veterans Parkway and access from that point. That's great, but a lot of people like myself come from either the freeway or from Virginia. If I'm coming on South Meadows, I go through the whole section where there's grocery stores and restaurants, that's all great, then I hit a school zone, then I hit where the new DMV is going in, and all the traffic that's going to bring to that area, then I hit where the Loop is being built, and that's a huge family activity center with restaurants and stuff in it, too. So that's not a smooth sailing, as it's being made to sound. Going down to Rio Wrangler, that's already backing up for veterans as traffic through, as the traffic preferences is being given to veterans. That's fine, but now there's an apartment building going in there, so that's going to back up even further. So my concern is traffic access. I am feeling rather claustrophobic in there by the high school, as it gets harder and harder to get into that landlocked area. And I think addressing some of these concerns first, you know, before you're settling on lot sizes, is a better option. I'm going to quickly switch over to the wild horse thing. I've said this before, I'm going to say it again, this is even bigger than the Corona Cyan project that we talked about last time. It cuts off more of Steamboat Creek. That access point, I don't care whether you like the wild horses, don't like the wild horses, think they should be there, don't, they are there. There are generations of them that only know that creek as a water source. This is going to cut off a bigger portion of that. If we wait until houses are being built, and you're putting up a fence to try to figure out how to get these horses water, we're going to have a problem. They're going to try to go through the fences to get to that water. We really need the city, the developers, the landowners, to sit down with us as advocates and try to come up with some alternative water sources, and then funding temporary diversionary feed to lead them to those sources, so that we are taking them away from these areas that are being built, instead of having this clash between community, roads, and thousand-pound animals. Thank you.
Jessica Simkins, followed by Tammy Holstel.
Hi, I'm Jessica Simkins. I'm actually currently, we're building, our family's building in the Bella Vista, right by the new elementary school. But we moved here thirteen years ago, right by Brown Elementary, and at the time, they were on a year-round schedule due to overcrowding. All the schools were totally overcrowded, and it finally took thirteen years to get a new school. Thirteen years. And it blew my mind, they're bringing in trailers and all these kinds of things to try to alleviate the problem, and finally we get this new elementary school, and I went to a PTO meeting recently, and the new Poliquita's principal and the Brown Elementary School principal both said that on day one, they will be at capacity, that it took so long to build that elementary school, that they're already at capacity on day one. So you're not only introducing this development, but other proposed developments, without any responsibility towards teachers and classrooms, classroom sizes, and it is my understanding that Nevada, developers don't have any responsibility towards contributing towards funds to building new schools. Many states they do, and here they don't, and so we end up with these schools that are just, it's putting the cart before the horse, you know, like we just fill them up and figure it out later. So that's kind of my biggest issue. Like, I actually kind of like the idea of that development going in, but for traffic reasons, I think you need to have another exit, a major exit, out of that development that does not feed in down south, but up north somehow. More, like, more development, I realize, like, I read in the news that, like, over the next twenty years, sixty-two thousand people are estimated to move to Reno, so I understand you have to move in, a lot of people, and so I understand that that is an issue, but I think that we need to be cautious about which areas we're allowing to become influxed, and think about the schools and its impact on them. So, thank you.
Tammy Holstel, followed by Andrew Marlin.
Tammy Holstel, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. Of course, I don't live down there, but there were a couple of things that caught my attention that made me decide that I needed to speak. Number one, flood zone. My neck of the woods. You guys have been told about Daybreak. Yeah, I know you guys approved it, but council denied it because of the fact it was a floodplain, that there were issues of building in floodplains, and the issues of what happens downstream from that. He mentioned it, I heard it, there's flood zone, it's something to be thinking about. Number two, the other thing that he talked about was this is just a zoning change. A zoning change, even though it is what you call zoning change, it is a subdivision of a map. As a subdivision of a map, you should be following NRSs. So there should be traffic studies, there should be approvals, and all that other stuff. It's time for the city of Reno to start doing the proper way. If they're going to do a zone change, it is a tentative map. They need to follow the tentative map, they need to get all the proper approvals, they need to do all of their work before walking up here and saying, "We want more space to build more houses." So I'm asking you guys to start looking at the NRSs, and start following the rules, because it needs to be done. Thank you.
Andrew Marlin, followed by Charles Seum.
Hello, Commissioners. Good evening. It's a privilege to be here. Thank you for your service to the community. It's a difficult task, trying to manage growth. It's a nice problem to have, but it's very challenging, and I appreciate that. So I'm here to express my objection to the proposal, based on the dramatic increase in density that it proposes, like eighteen times, as someone said before, which is in fact true. So I oppose that. When I moved to the Demone Ranch area, Saddle Ridge neighborhood specifically, right up against the hill, I looked around and saw what was the potential plans, and, you know, I was comfortable, more or less, with what I saw, except for this increase in density wasn't, didn't exist at the time, or the proposal, so, based on that. But more than anything else, I'm a wild horse advocate, I'm a horse owner, I'm a durance rider, I've had BLM Mustang before, and I've spent the last eight months really kind of studying on a daily basis, the entire herd in the Virginia range. But as pertains to this project, I'm most concerned about the fact that you have at the end of Rio Wrangler, all the way down to the terminus, which would be at Alexander Lake, you know, right before Hidden Valley. It's about a two-and-a-half-mile strip, about a, maybe half-mile wide. There are a hundred and twenty-five horses, about eight to twelve groups, but about a hundred and twenty-five horses. They depend on this parcel, as well as the Cyan parcel, which is about seventy acres, for their water, and for four, five, six months out of the year, about a fifteen-to-twenty-acre marshland that is flood-irrigated weekly. So that's what they depend on. There isn't anything up in the hills. Up in the hills is no forage and no water, nothing. Up in the hills is no forage and no water, nothing. And the horses tend to, throughout the entire Virginia range, go down into the lower areas, get out of the wind and so forth. So in looking at the Cyan project and this as well, there is absolutely zero consider, consideration for the horses, this natural resource. And I think that there is enough public support for the horses, and there's enough resources and brain power with all the constituents involved to put together some sort of plan that is proactive. The state has no plan whatsoever for the horses, and what I want to avoid, zero, in terms of any kind of credible plan. And what I want to avoid is two very negative outcomes. One would be the horses fenced out completely, as they are virtually from most of this area, and you have dehydration and starvation. Or two, the, the state coming in and gathering the horses and selling them at an auction, which presumably, which will be, to a kill buyer so that they can have a trip to Mexico and be slaughtered. Those are outcomes nobody wants. So I think that there needs to be some real planning into this issue, because this project, as well as the Cyan project, their contiguous properties completely eliminate the horses from their source of water and, and forage. And down the line, there's no, if you proceed further north, there's no water for them. They have to walk, you know, a mile and a half, two miles or more to get to this area. So it has to be considered. In the Cyan project, it was 70 pages, millions of dollars, years in the making, and there was one sentence for the horses. Okay? Thank you.
Charles Singh.
My name's Charles Singh, and I live right there in Demontie Ridge, right there by Steamboat and Rio Wrangler. We're talking about 1,000 houses being proposed. You know, somewhere, return on your investment and greed has to be separated. We're talking about 1,000 houses, but we're not talking about the 5,000 and 8,000 houses that are under construction. You know, if you live on those streets, thousands of trucks, and I'm making imagination, hundreds of trucks full of gravel, dirt, cars, school, backing up, this is all a problem. It's overshadowed. The mountains are melting, the mountains are going away. If you guys have been out there, you'll notice that the houses are already halfway up the mountain. That's not right. These horses have no place to go for their feed, their breeding, their raising their children. But it's not only about the horses, it's about the ducks, the geese, the wildlife. You know, we complain in our area about the coyotes. Well, what you're doing is now taking even more space away from their hunting grounds. This is wrong. Greed on the side of the developers and the people who own this need to put their money where their mouth is. There are schools, there are highways, there are roads, the water, the sewer, the electric buildings, all this has to be included. You don't build a house and then figure out where is the roads coming into these places. You know, if you look at the corner of Carrot and Steamboat, there's a housing development right next to the wetlands. I thought that. You go in there, 6,000 square feet per yard. It is terrible. It's awful. And for them to decide they're going to go with 6,000 square feet to increase their return on their investment is greed. Pure and simple greed. And this is just so irritating for us who live there. You know, we're the ones who are impacted. Not you, because none of you said you live there. We, these people, are impacted. We fight the traffic. That school, at Demontie High School, the traffic is backed that for three, four blocks. You cannot get through. Fortunately, we just live right there. But for going down to the other end of Rio Wrangler, it's a nightmare. You can't, there's trucks going there, too. There's trucks going in this direction. Why? I mean, there's just too much. If you want to plan something like this, plan it after you have finished all these houses, then take a look at it. But we cannot continue to fill and rebuild and tear the land that we have that belongs to mother nature. You know, I just hope you will vote no. Please, thank you.
So anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and I will offer to the applicant who reserved 10 minutes, if you have liked to speak on any of the issues that you've heard prior to the council commission here asking our questions and our discussion.
Andy, do you need your presentation?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, commissioners, for the record, Andy Dilling with Wood Rogers. Just to, to maybe address a few of the comments, there was a question of whether or not this was a project of regional significance. Projects of regional significance are not triggered at the zoning maps, or at a zoning map change like this, because the number of units, you know, thrown out that 1,000 units, that's the maximum density, that's not necessarily what is feasible to build on this property. So that, again, getting back to kind of the last slide in my presentation, there is a process that we go through that we have to take step by step. We are not allowed to submit a tentative map for four or five or 600 units, whatever it may ultimately be on this property, until we have the zoning in place. If we tried to submit that, Claudia and her staff would kick it out because it doesn't conform to the zoning. So we have to go through this process. It is a process. We know that it is a, it sometimes can maybe be a frustrating process, but this is the process that is dictated by state law, and this is what we have to follow. There is infrastructure planning in place that has gone on. We can look at the maps and intuitively say, you know, there's, there's connections that can be made to, to South Meadows Parkway. It's stubbed to Steamboat Creek, we would need to build a bridge to go across, there is sewer that's stubbed there. There has been planning in place to accommodate for future growth on the east side of Steamboat Creek. We have, Rio Wrangler would be extended. Rio Wrangler's connection to South Meadows provides additional ways in and out of the Demontie Ranch area. We understand, you know, there's, there's currently that, you know, there isn't a lot of ways out of there, and Steamboat Parkway gets inundated. With additional intersections, that's good planning. That's how we, as planners, look at from a macro level, providing more ways in and out of our communities and our neighborhoods is a good thing. And, and that, that is a process that takes time. It doesn't happen overnight. We don't go out and build hundreds of miles of roadway in anticipation. It gets built as the subdivisions get built. Addressing, somebody brought up the RTC's study. We are very well aware of the RTC study, we have been coordinating with them. That study's purpose is really to look at what the changes in traffic are now that Veterans Parkway has opened. Veterans Parkway, another fine example of us planning ahead and building in oversized infrastructure in order to accommodate the growth in the southeast neighborhoods. We've been working with RTC, they're aware of the plans, they're looking to capture kind of all of the plans that are out there in the southeast neighborhoods in order to appropriately plan for the future of, of the roadway infrastructure in that area. I wanted to touch on school overcrowding. So school overcrowding is, is something's personal to me. I understand the, the concepts and the, and the complexity of overcrowding, especially in the Double Diamond and Demontie Ranch area. The good news is, is that, you know, we as a community adopted WC1 a couple of years ago, and we now have school funding in order to pay for the schools. We don't have a state law that enables us to have impact fees, plain and simple. We just don't. The law is not there, we can't apply that to developers. But we do have a tax now that is broad brush and, and is something that all of the citizens are paying for, not just trying to pick on, on one or two. So we do have a, a school plan that's in place with Washoe County School District. There's a new Poliquitas Elementary School that's under construction. The school district's planning on another elementary school to be constructed in Demontie Ranch, so those plans are in place. I think a lot of times when we're here talking about the zoning, you know, it's, the assumption is that, that homes are going to be, start to build, you know, you approve this tonight, and homes are going to start being built tomorrow. That's just not the case. This takes a long time. This zoning map amendment, we have to go through, this takes us into the spring, we would then be able to submit a tentative map, that takes several months. We're looking at about a two-year process before you will see any homes start coming out of the ground on this parcel. So in that time period, let's look at what's going to be happening in the southeast neighborhoods. We have Mark Krueger here, he's a residential broker who studies the, the house construction, new home construction throughout the region. His studies are presented every year for the Builders Association to understand what the impacts are to our pipeline of new homes. Plain and simple, we have a lot of population growth going on in the northern Nevada region. We have a lot of jobs that have come into this community, which is a great thing, because the Great Depression was very, or the Great Recession was very depressing for a lot of people, and there were a lot of people out of work, and now we have the opportunity to employ, we have 3% unemployment, practically full employment, so we have a lot of inmigration and population growth. With that comes the need to build more housing. And when we look at where housing is being built in the Reno Sparks area, almost 40% of new homes are being built in the southeast submarket, Demontie Ranch, Bella Vista Ranch, this area down here. Makes up almost 40% of the new home market. There is only about 2,000, just over 2,000 lots that are left to be built in the kind of Caramella, Demontie area. That buildout is, those are being sold and built at about 700 to 800 a year. So just doing the simple math, we're going to be out of lots in the southeast submarket by the end of 2021. And with this, a project like this that can start to backfill that pipeline and help stabilize home prices, it takes two years. We have to plan ahead for this. If we wait until everything's built out, then we're behind the eight ball and we're in, in even more dire housing market, and it becoming more and more unaffordable for our Reno families to afford a home again. With that, Mr. Chairman, we, we do feel like this is an appropriate time. It can be a very simple, almost binary decision for you tonight, because you approved a new master plan. The master plan identifies that this is a single-family neighborhood, the existing zoning does not comply with that. This brings this property into better conformance and starts to implement the vision that you adopted as part of Reimagine Reno. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, I'm going to bring it back here for questions. Again, I would remind the audience that we are trying to pay attention to the presentations, so any background conversations that are going on are very distracting to us, so please try to eliminate that or take that outside. So with that, who would like to start with questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for Andy. Andy, on one of your last slides up there, you showed the perimeter of the acreage, and it looked like you were coming real close to some rock outcroppings.
Maybe on this one, does that help show that? Commissioner Hawkins?
No. It's not it.
This one? So this is all, this is all disturbed land, this is part of that aggregate pit. This is a existing substation. So that's an NV Energy electric substation, power substation there. There's not really any rock outcroppings on this area. It's, it's, like I said, almost, I don't know, call it 80% of the parcel is, has been disturbed, it's been an active aggregate pit for decades, and this would, you know, this is not native land any longer because of that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it up there. Anyway, my second question is, somebody indicated that the NAB has not seen this yet.
This is in Ward Three. We did go to the Ward Three Neighborhood Advisory Board. We had a request to come to the Ward Two Neighborhood Advisory Board, but it was after their, what are we, in January, or February, so January meeting? So we asked staff to put us on their February agenda, I believe it's February 19th. So we will be going to the NAB February 19th, which would put it prior to any city council decision on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy, question for you. As I understand it, based on your presentation and my memory, this is a, essentially a, a component of what was presented to us a year-ish ago with the Daybreak PUD. Can you explain how this essentially compares to what was presented to us as part of that PUD?
Sure. So the Daybreak PUD included this area. It was approved by the Planning Commission, ultimately denied by the city council. This area in particular was identified as a single-family in that PUD, so it was basically a similar approach to what we have basically now presented under, under straight city common zoning, if you will. So this doesn't have planned unit development on it that we're proposing, we're just asking to utilize the master plan designation and utilize a conforming zoning in order to move forward through the standard city of Reno zoning process, zoning and development process, I should say.
We don't want to rehash the past, but in that PUD, can you give us a sense of, within that single-family range? Because there can be pretty wide range of the, the densities that were considered in this component of the PUD.
So this component, it was in the five to six dwelling unit per acre range. There were a couple different villages that were proposed in there. So even though we're asking for single-family 6,000-square-foot zoning, we do anticipate having a mix of, of housing products in here. It'll be probably a combination of six, seven, and eight thousand square-foot lots. When you look at, on the screen here, it gives you kind of a, a good perspective of, of the southeast area. When you look at Bella Vista, Cyan, throughout Double Diamond, a lot of the, the lots in there range from, you know, in Double Diamond, there's down probably less than 4,000 square feet, up to, you know, eight, 9,000 square feet. So it's going to fit within that spectrum that really is commonplace in, in the southeast neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could ask another question?
Please, please.
The commentary in the audience is really distracting, Mr. Chairman.
I understand, and I've asked twice, I don't want to ask a third time.
Question for staff. Brooke, I know you're not a traffic engineer, but I'm hoping that you can help me get to something close to an answer, or at least provide some context in terms of traffic. So as Andy just mentioned, there's a lot of development going on in the southeast portion of the city here, and it's of varying densities and types of residential development. So what we're looking at is a zone change to SF6, and we have some of the preliminary traffic information from that. Can you give us a sense of some of the traffic generation for the multifamily development that's going on, particularly, I'm thinking about the corner of Veterans and Steamboat, I believe it is, there's about, I mean, it feels like 100 acres of high-density multifamily. So for a, essentially one acre of, you know, SF6 versus one acre of MF15. I mean, you know where I'm getting at? I'm trying to get a sense of the, the traffic generation here and, and get to the, the concern and the issues that we're talking about. I mean, at, I know we're only at the zone change level here, but for the types of, of residential development?
Yes, I, so I'm not, I'm not familiar with the project nor the traffic numbers on the multifamily on, on the MF30 that you're speaking of. With that, though, you do, with multifamily, oftentimes you're locating around a public transit or, or orienting towards that. We're looking to, to create those TOD corridors, the MU corridors, and so sometimes those, those traffic could look a little bit different in those areas, assuming if that's there or not. You are seeing a higher density, obviously, more cars. You're also probably seeing in those situations, less car per household in that situation versus a single-family residential. Where, where your traffic loads are going to come in, and this is your morning, evening, as you off to work and, and coming back there, we would expect that to be with the single family, the 6,000, obviously, less than some of our denser places in that comparability of demographic and lifestyle on that. Traffic engineer, or our, our planning manager, or engineering manager is here tonight, too, and he might be able to sort of give a better assessment as where he does that analysis a little bit more than I do, so. Would you like to speak, speak with him?
No, I mean, I think that's a, I wasn't really looking for specifics necessarily in terms of number of trips, but just, you know, the, the comparisons of different types of development and traffic generation. I think you, I think you hit on those, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Wieske.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brooke, don't sit down yet, because I'm going to piggyback on, onto the traffic issue, and if you would like to defer to our engineering manager, that's fine. How does, how does a zone change, which is not a project, which is not designed number of units, as we've sat here and listened to for the last 45 minutes to an hour? How does staff look at the potential increase to traffic and daily road trips? How does staff look at the potential increase to traffic and daily road trips to the existing areas and the existing roadways versus whether or not this is compatible with, in its own property boundary lines?
Yeah, it's, it's challenging, right? Because it is, there's a big flux that could happen here from 500 to 1,000, right? And so that specific comes at that tentative map, as was discussed. What we are looking at is the overall road network, the infrastructure, the investment that's been made out there with the southeast connector, what would, you know, the proposal of that, the extension of Rio Wrangler, that connection in with South Meadows Parkway connects another sort of distant or taking-off point where people can take different modes of travel. Also looking at that proximity really into that Veterans Parkway, its ability to go to I-80 quite quickly or down south. So we were looking at the overall sort of network there, the network that's been established there, and then the continuance of that. What's really unique about this parcel is that potentially you would see an extension of South Meadows Parkway, but that it is, because of the hillside, current city boundaries, it is rather limited on that expansion there, right? So that, all those were taken into consideration to kind of look at this a whole. It does see staff feel that the current infrastructure, as proposed, could handle this, knowing that at a tentative map, we would have that second chance to look at that traffic, and that's when really those traffic studies are coming in, those impacts are coming in, and then we can look at the possible mitigation, the lowering of densities, those requirements that would be happening to maintain the level of service.
And that's fine, but if you've got existing roadways that are already built, and you have existing track developments surrounding those roadways, you run the risk of overloading those smaller streets and roadways by adding more development above it, and there's no room to grow the road in width or additional lanes below it, correct? So we would be compounding the problem?
Potentially you would, but that would be analyzed in that, I think, the density and the housing and everything at the tentative map, they would have to meet the level of service required. And so if that was through mitigation, lighting, you know, light, other improvements that had to happen off-site or on-site, that would be determined at that level.
So that gets determined at a later date?
Correct. And along with also the density of the development and those other things that would impact traffic?
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions, but I'm ready, I mean, in discussion, please don't forget me.
I could never forget you. You would never let me do that. Commissioners, additional questions? Mr. Marshall?
Brooke? Sorry for having you pogo here. There's reference in the staff report to the Butler Ranch PUD.
Yeah, what we were looking at is that this, this landowner does own that entire parcel, and so a lot of the analysis was done through that original Daybreak, Daybreak PUD that was before you, before. And so some of that, as far as looking at some of the analysis, and some of that was done on the site as a whole. And so the Butler Ranch PUD sits to the far north end of their overall project site. It's an approved PUD, so. More questions on that, or?
Well, I was just trying to figure out the reference. I mean, it doesn't apply to this particular parcel.
No, and the reference within the staff report was to determine that a fair amount of analysis was done through that process, and that analysis from Mercury, being at, looking at some of those other issues, that was done on this entire site, this site included. And so that, that information was pulled from that overall analysis of that.
Do you have any estimate of the number of approved but unbuilt units in single-family that we've already, or the city has already approved? I mean, we're adding more to that, potentially more to that stock. Can you give me an idea of what that single-family, non-multi-residential?
I do not currently have those numbers. I can provide those for you or get those for you. I can defer to Claudia, she currently does not either. We don't have those on hand.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, additional questions? This might have been asked as well. Discussion, Commissioner Rowinski, would you like to get us started with that?
If you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Apparently, there's no additional questions, so let's start with the discussion.
Okay.
To hear what you have to say.
First of all, to address the question of, do any of us live down there or have lived down there? I'm fortunate enough to say that I closed the second residential escrow in Double Diamond in 1997. You should have seen it then. It was awesome. Dark, no lights, no streets. I had one neighbor. It was great. I mean, the pastures around there, the horses weren't a problem. There was never any horse-vehicle confrontations. And look at it today. So with that being said, that answers that question. And I know one other Planning Commissioner grew up there because she lived a street I have a real hard time with Item H, which involves traffic, and the questions that I asked of staff and the answer that I got back was answered my question of trying to figure out how staff could make Finding H, which deals with traffic and transportation, without knowing how many units are going to be built. It's based upon proposed, it's projected. We don't know what the effects are to the adjoining roadways and streets because we don't know exactly where things are tying in right now. We know that there is a great deal of traffic in the area. We know there are a great deal of homes to be built in the area. And without knowing where we are with the total number of units to be built in Double Diamond and South Meadows, up along the foothills, I have a hard time from here on out increasing densities in the area because I see us stacking more and more houses onto smaller roads that were not necessarily designed for the numbers of units going up into the hills that we've been approving. I've been approving, voting in favor of, I should say, because I'm only one of seven And although we just finished Reimagine Reno, Andy, thank you for the greatest compliment I've heard yet, and that is that Reno, that Reimagine Reno's new master plan must be perfect, and we have everything exactly the way it is, so now give us what our zone change. I'm not so sure that we didn't, we don't have a couple of bubbles throughout Reno and in the master plan that maybe shouldn't have densities or the type of use placed to it. We've seen a little bit of that in North Valleys. We've seen a little bit on the west side. Maybe we're seeing it on the southeast side of town. But to end my discussion, I cannot make Finding H, and I will not be voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Rowinski. Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to follow up on Commissioner Rowinski's comment about being there in 1997. I think I've got you beat by a little bit. I was a student, I was a student at Brown Elementary School that is now the administrative building in the early 80s. So I can remember what it looked like. I remember walking on a field trip to the old fire station that was there, and there was absolutely nothing in that valley. And it was, it was beautiful. I'm, I'm surprised, though, frankly, with Commissioner Rowinski's comments, because with all due respect, in, in the planning process, we have the steps that Andy mentioned with the master plan, the zone change, and the tentative map. And I'm looking at the tentative map finding. So this would be the third step in the process for, you know, this proposal. And Finding F in, for a tentative map, is general conformity with the governing body's master plan of streets and highways. Finding G for a tentative map is the effect of the proposed subdivision on existing public streets and the need for new streets or highways to serve the subdivision. So with those two findings related to a tentative map, in a public process for a proposed development, I think we would have the traffic covered when we see what the actual density of development would be. The challenge at the zoning stage is yes, we're looking at a situation where it appears that there's an increase in density, which with an allowance of a subsequent phase of a tentative map, if approved, it would result in an increase in density. But in order to do the planning that's associated with looking into the future for RTC or any other organization, NDOT, they have to have an understanding of what the future development potential would be. So if this moves forward as SF6, then they would incorporate that into their planning process to expand, hopefully, the infrastructure to accommodate it. If we look at it at the tentative map phase, and we look at Finding F and Finding G and say, okay, this proposal doesn't conform with the governing body's master plan of streets and highways because there's no plan in place to address it, and there's no, and there's going to be an impact on public streets, then I would hope that we wouldn't move forward with it. But strictly looking at it as a zoning proposal to bring it into conformance with what the master plan says it should be, I can make all of the findings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Marshall?
I'd like to act as Commissioner Rowinski's rebuttal. I look at this in two ways. One is, you know, you can look at the development potential you've identified with your SF6 zoning and say, what could be developed here? And run various scenarios that give us information as to what might the impacts be from that kind of development potential. You don't have to have a set sub, proposed subdivision map or tentative map. But to me, it really kind of more speaks about the timing issue. Is it, is the timing appropriate now to rezone this from single-family, excuse me, from large-lot residential to SF6? And that's where I'm having my issues. I think they're, they're very similar to, they, they, excuse me, they include the traffic issues, but more to the point of, we're developing, again, on the edge of the city. It's a little closer in than maybe, you know, North Valleys or someplace even further north, but we're developing on the edge of the city, and we're developing single-family residential. And quite honestly, from what my understanding of our available housing stock and our available, what is approved but not built, is we have an excess of single-family, and that's not where we should be trying to satisfy our more immediate needs regarding housing stock. Now, this is relatively dense, so that's better than, in some ways, better than large-lot residential at 2.5 per acre or two-and-a-half acres per lot? That it? That, where I'm having difficulty considering this is, in the timing aspect of it's appropriate now, at the, at this edge of the city, right up against the foothills, to intensify zoning in this particular area, given the, all the range of issues that we've heard. And so I guess the question is, my mind is, you know, what commissioners feel about, is this the appropriate time to take this action, given, you know, the information that we have before us? And that's where I'm getting hung up on being able to support it.
Additional comments? Mr. Rowinski?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add a little bit to that, please. A lot of the comments that I just heard from my two fellow commissioners are comments that I shared with Andy earlier today, and the last one that really rings loud with me is, is the timing right for this? And I told Andy I did not think the timing was right for this zone change because there is additional information with surrounding properties and developments and roadways and infrastructure that, in the future, may help me look at this project differently. But looking at what is today and what is in our staff report and what was in the application for this zone change, I, I don't see where there's transportation in this area, multimodal other than vehicles or bicycles, which are always good for me. But, you know, RTC is having, you know, they're, they're looking at where their service is, and they're trying to figure these things out because they, they're lacking in areas. And, and so that's why I'm where I am today. Six months from now would be, might be a different story if this came before me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Always entertaining following the three of you eloquent speakers on this. I, I guess, I kind of maybe disagree a little bit with all of you. I'm not sure, when I, when I look at the findings, I'm not sure timing is something that necessarily comes to mind as, as an issue for me. It's not, you know, as Andy says, it's a long process. What we're looking at right now may happen, may not happen. It's a question of what we're maybe setting the table to allow to happen. So to me, timing is not really something that I, I look into when I'm looking at my findings, and it's more of a question of, you know, is it appropriate? I, I look at the location of this, and I agree, actually, that it's, you know, it's on the fringe, it's on the edge. But it's also right next to the new Steamboat Parkway, or the new southeast connector, Veterans Parkway. There is connectivity from there, there's utilities, there's services that are there. So, and I look at it, when I look at this map, and I've been staring at while everybody's been talking, and there's basically a whole sea. I wasn't out there in 97, but I was here in 97, and I remember, you know, driving out there, or as far as I could to drive out there. We've got an area, and you speak to, you know, RTC looking at what they're going to do and what they're going to bring there. There's a lot of population out there. RTC's looking at that population and determining that maybe this is an appropriate place for multimodal. I mean, the, the traffic that's there, that everybody speaks to, you know, all of us are part of that traffic. When we're driving it in and complaining about it, it's because we're part of that traffic. So if RTC is seeing that issue, which obviously they are, you know, that's part of the development that they're going to be bringing to this, whether or not this has been approved from a zoning change or not, I'm not so sure that, that the timing necessarily impacts that. So I look at it in terms of maybe from the overall planning standpoint. We're talking about planning, what's appropriate for planning. I think what we've got out there is a bunch of residential properties. We've got the potential for more businesses, more commercial to happen, and in fact, that was part of the discussion about the Bella Vista project when I was here before, was the fact that we wanted to maintain commercial in that area because we recognize the fact that everybody has to commute somewhere else to get to the grocery store, to get to the bank, to get to all of that. And so I look at this, and I think from the overall planning of what we're looking to do here, this to me is a residentially, you know, an area that needs to be residential. Do I? Do I want it to be, you know, six thousand square feet per lot? That seems a little abrupt of a change from the large lot residential. But again, this is just a zoning, this is a, a potential thing here. This is going back to the comments that you were making in terms of, of, uh, traffic and in terms of schools. This is a potential. We don't know. Um, we get to look at all of the findings that Commissioner, uh, Gower had spoke about when this becomes a project. Um, so I guess when I'm looking at it, I'm trying to understand from an overall planning, does it make sense if this is a more robust residential development than it currently is? Um, that to me is where I'm looking at with all of the findings that we have to make. There is a question about, you know, it's not even about traffic, it's about to develop an orderly and efficient arrangement of transportation, public so, facilities and services. The roadway network is in place. Is the roadway network sufficient for this? Well, I think we've looked at the numbers and staff has indicated that they've incorporated those numbers and looked at the potential locations where those can go and that there's a comfort level with that. So in going back and looking at these findings, I guess that's where I'm trying to, to come to grips with it. I appreciate the discussion that we're having because it's kind of taking me in a number of different places. But again, I'm not sure that where I'm going is dictated by, is this the right time for it? It's more a question of, is this the right approach to what we're doing here? Uh, is a rezone to an SF six the appropriate thing here based on the findings that we're doing? And I think that is really what I'm grasping with, not as to, you know, eh, eh, what, you know, what could it be based on what we're doing there? And when it becomes that, are the vehicles and the mechanisms in place for us to address that? Can it be meet, can it meet the traffic? Can it meet all of the other adjacencies that it's going with? So that's where my head is at. I know I've got a couple of commissioners that may want to comment further, um, or rebut anything that I have to say, so. I don't want to have the bully pulpit here, Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Hawkins and then Commissioner Gower.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, my biggest concern, of course, like a few that we've looked at is density. And SF six is just too dense for me. And unless we can get around that and go SF nine, uh, I would probably be voting to deny this. Thank you.
Commissioner Hawkins, Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple additional thoughts to follow up on yours and some of the comments that we had during public comment. Number one is that there was a pretty, um, direct comment towards the city that it wasn't planned well in the south. Um, I think that if all seven of us were able to start from scratch back in nineteen eighty seven or nineteen ninety seven, whenever, whenever it was, um, we would probably plan it differently. We would put the high school somewhere else. Um, we would have a different roadway network arrangement, where there would be more open space. So we could all enjoy those things that are out there. Um, the park layouts would be different, whatever. So, and there would be seven different opinions to that effect. Um, that's point number one. That's kind of the, the fundamental aspect of planning. Um, two, zoning is not an entitlement. It doesn't give the developer any sort of right to build anything. It's a planning mechanism. It allows us to understand what the future development potential of the land is. Without having an understanding of what that potential is, then planning can't happen. Um, the third thing is, we looked at this as part of the daybreak PUD. And I don't remember more than three public comments during that whole process of looking at that PUD. And this part of the development was essentially zoned. It was part of a PUD. So it was a, a master plan, uh, amendment, but it would have allowed for a similar type of development. And we didn't have any, any, any issues with it then. We didn't have the type of feedback that we have. So what has changed?
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, I'll chime in. Um, as we're in discussion, I just wanted to comment that I'm really aligning with what Commissioner Gower is saying. I'm looking at this for the zoning map. And so I'm going based on those findings. I think it's important to distinguish what the zoning map findings will be bases on, on the tentative map that we'll see following. And so I'm really aligned with there and I'm looking at the findings that I have before me for this. I understand it's a frustrating process that we look at it in those parcels, but we have to remind ourselves that it is the vehicle that we have this evening to look at. And so that's where I am. I won't repeat everybody's comments, but just so everybody gets where my mind is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis, um, just to touch on a few of the items that have kind of been brought up in the discussion. I think, uh, traffic, um, there's always traffic concerns. And I think that, uh, when we look at the different layers, the master plan, the zoning and then the maps, I think that we're looking at that like thirty thousand feet. We've dropped down to twenty thousand feet for this. And then when we see the maps, we'll be at ten thousand feet or so. And, and I think that when I look at this, I don't, I don't have an issue with the traffic. The major arteries are stubbed in, South Meadows, Veterans is there. Um, there's potentially going to be access up Alexander with a new intersection up there that was part of the PUD. It's not part of it now. So, so I don't have issues with the traffic. Um, I think timing, um, I guess I don't know what the, how do we define what is the right timing? I think that's got to be very market driven. That's got to be very developer driven and community driven as to, uh, when do people want to buy the houses? Do we say, okay, somebody wants to buy a house now, so let's start the process? I think that you got to look out further than that. And, and so timing, I think that it probably is appropriate timing because it takes a long time to get through the rest of the process. Um, and then one thing, we've talked a little bit about density and I think there's a bit of a conflict there. There's other discussions we've had with zoning and we really want to encourage a lot of density and, and, um, and where, where do we get that density? I think some, some commissioners have pushed other projects in, in this area and pushed against that they weren't, didn't have enough density. So what's the right balance on the density? I think, um, that's a tougher question. I think that this is single family and, and it, uh, it, it's not going to yield. I, I meant to ask it during, uh, the question time, but I, this isn't going to yield a thousand ninety units. Eh, eh, that's just the mathematical extension of the, of the density in the acreage. Um, there's going to be roadways, there's going to be parks, there's going to be other things that, that even, that the theoretical density versus the, the practical density, um, it's going to yield a different number. So, um, I think that, uh, density may be a tougher question, but, but I don't have an issue with that. It's, it's going to be better than a thousand ninety. So all in all, when I kind of listen to some of the comments, I think that, uh, I don't agree with all of them. And I think that, uh, overall that I can make all the findings.
Okay, Commissioners, any additional discussion? Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last comment. Looking at this map as you are, and I know we, we look at a lot of maps. Some of them are site specific, some of them are master plan. In this case, we're looking at zoning. And looking at this vicinity map, the South Meadows area, Southeast Reno is primarily residential. It's evolved that way over the last thirty years. And for all of us, all of our family, all the, the folks who have spoken about it tonight, you know, eh, each one of us has a piece of that residential puzzle down there. And looking at it from a zoning level, I'm looking at the compatibility. Zoning to me is about compatibility at this scale on the map of the, on the right-hand side of that screen. And for me, I don't see any difference necessarily between this development and any other, any of the other, uh, residential multifamily, um, the various densities of development in, in the South Meadows. It's, you scale up in some areas, it's scaled down in some areas. Um, so in terms of a patchwork that's been created over the last thirty years, that green piece to me is one of seven fits into that patchwork. And when that patchwork is fit in with its color, whatever it's given, SF six in this case, the planning that is subsequent to zoning, traffic, school capacity, everything that those agencies use to plan, which is zoning, um, will be incorporated into their planning process. And when we get to the tentative map, the site-specific review of it, we'll take a look at the specific findings related to street capacity relative to dwelling units and all of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Could I just have one last?
Commissioner Marshall?
Comment net and Commissioner Gower, I, I agree that, you know, if you looked at the compatibility with the existing zoning in SF six and the higher density that that provides, I would generally be in support of that. But the question before us is not, this is an area without zoning and so we need to give it something appropriate. The question is, do we upzone this from, uh, large lot residential to SF six at this point? And so to me, that's a little different question. And the, for, for me, what's important is in that zoning decision, we are, we're in essence saying, you know, developer or property owner, we want to give you that zoning so you can bring back, if you would like, a tentative map. I personally want to push pressure elsewhere for those units. Whatever, you know, if there's only five hundred units as a result of what they're, you know, I think we have enough of SF, single family dwelling, zoning, uh, to supply our, our needs. What we need is something different. And so I want to use market pressure, market forces to push other places develop at higher density. So if we're presented with an opportunity, as we are here, to rezone something, I think it's a different question. I look at that differently than saying, is SF six in the abstract appropriate for this spot? Given what's surrounding it? So that's why I, I, I kind of agree with what you're saying. On the one hand, on the other hand, I don't view the question is, you know, what is the appropriate zoning? If you had to do it all over again for this particular spot? Um, so that's maybe explain why I'm, you know, I like the SF six zoning because of the higher density and all that stuff. But I'm not certain, eh, at least for me, that upzoning at this point on the edge of the city is what we should be doing.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could respond to that?
Mr. Gower?
So, Commissioner Marshall, I understand where you're going and it's, I mean, that's, that's a different type of plan. I mean, it's not a different type of planning. I mean, that's looking at planning at the master plan level. And in this case, the master plan is saying that we want single family residential here. And what you're saying is by not upzoning, you're, you're essentially taking that residential demand that exists, demand for housing units, and pushing it somewhere else. So in essence, we're, eh, what you're saying is drawing a line in the sand and saying in, in the South Meadows area, we have enough housing units, we have enough of this type of, of development. We want to see it go somewhere else. But isn't that a, isn't that a master plan question?
Um, I guess, if I may, um, I guess I view it, uh, as, as, yes, it is, but zoning, uh, the translation of that larger vision of a master plan as to where appropriate types of usage should be. Um, I also look at the master plan as really, and we spent a lot of time, you guys more than, than myself, on creating policies that would allow us to accomplish, um, a range of objectives, not just more single family, uh, and on the fringes of the city, but to push development in other places. And this is an opportunity, I think, for us to do that. Now, in the abstract, should we, you know, should we, as a matter of plant, good planning, have consistency between our master plan and our zoning? So we should rezone this to be, uh, SF six or some SF zone? Um, I, I, yeah, I agree with you that we should, that's a good reason why this property may have that, you know, appropriate zone come out of large lot residential and into single family. But for me, the, there's a separate and unique, or I, a different question, which is, should we do that right now? Given everything that's going on in the city, uh, and should we oh, uh, basically upzone this, increase density in this location at this time? And that, that to me allows us to look more broadly, just at a kind of a simple consistency between our master plan and, uh, the implementing zoning underneath it. That answers.
Yeah.
I have a feeling we're not going to convince each other, by the way.
No, I mean, it's good, it's good discussion, Mr. Marshall. That's why we have it.
And I think just one, one comment that I will make, and this is, you know, I see Commissioner Wieski went in there about, one of the questions that I would have for you, Commissioner Marshall, because I understand exactly where you're coming from on this. I would pose the question to you, based on what's been presented to us, we have findings to make. I would be interested in hearing of those findings, what you are unable to make and why, because of this desire to push this somewhere else. Because that is really what we are tasked with doing, is looking at this from respect to the findings. I understand the question that Commissioner Gower is asking with respect to the master plan. And I understand the, the desire that you're looking at with respect to trying to force things elsewhere. Um, but I think our task, since this is of course a recommendation to council, is to be able to identify for the reasons that you've stated, where in that list of findings, this particular concern could be looked at and an inability to make a finding.
Certainly, it's, for me, it's GH and particularly L. And to ensure the development of adequate supply of housing, to me, adequate does not necessarily just means the number of total units that we need. But to promote the objectives of the master plan, which is to plot, you know, supply adequacy in housing includes a whole range of housing types and including the development of affordable housing. Um, and then, uh, H really to me also says, talks about the timeliness of the type of development or zoning, uh, change that we're being asked to make at this time. Now, that kind of goes more to infrastructure. Um, but it, but it, to me, it's wrapped up in kind of the same, uh, notion of how do we plan for effective and efficient infrastructure in the city if we keep developing at the edges? Uh, so that's, you know, to me, I can, those are the three findings that I have identified that, um, would go along the ones that I could not make if under my theory of the world.
Okay. And I just understood and I, I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, talking on the same thing for the record for that. Commissioner Wieski, did you have an additional comment?
Um, I did. And, Mr. Chairman, in response to Commissioner Gower's comment regarding SF six, I, I would be curious to know how many projects we've seen in the last ten years where an applicant has come in and asked to change from SF six to SF fifteen or large lot residential? The stepping stone. This is a stepping stone for a reason. This is what development does. This is what planners do. This is not our job to stop it, but it's our job to look into the future at it and say, is SF six the right project? Or is it SF nine? Or is it SF fifteen? That's not our job. Our job is to compare large lot residential to SF six tonight. That's all that's being asked and proposed. Whether or not it goes to multifamily, whether it goes to something else, that's a whole nother application. That's not what's before us tonight. So I, I don't disagree, Commissioner Gower, with you on the tool. Normally, this is the kind of thing that I'm talking about and I'm promoting and saying this is the tool. But in this case, it's too large of a jump from large lot residential to SF six for me to make these findings. Doesn't mean that I wouldn't make it if it was some other option. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's no additional discussion? We have presented in the, uh, updated memorandum that Brooke so kindly presented to us twice tonight. Boom, I didn't forget. Um, the proposed motions, uh, for this project, uh, as well as the findings. Uh, so I would entertain Commissioner making whatever. So I would entertain Commissioner making whatever motion they feel they would like to make. I want to all speak at once.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieski.
Mr. Wieski.
In the case of LDC 19-00026, Rio Wrangler North Zone Change. Based on my inability to make all the required findings, key word "all," I move to recommend that City Council deny the zoning map amendment. I am unable to make the following required findings, specifically H. I can agree with G. I can agree with L as three findings. And the zoning map amendment does not conform to the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieski. I have a motion. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that motion and in addition say I can't make findings G and L.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment and discussion.
You were just waiting for me to say that, weren't you? Asked for that discussion.
Yeah. You know, sometimes as planning commissioners were presented with tough questions, some decisions are easier than others. You know, I obviously advocated a certain way, and I appreciate the discussion of fellow commissioners and the perspectives that they bring. It's an interesting process, and as one of the public commenters mentioned, it's, you know, it's a challenge. So I'm actually going to be voting in favor of the motion, and the rationale is, I, based on the logic that Commissioner Wieski and Commissioner Marshall made relative to finding H, and the timely, the timeliness of it, I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I add one last comment, please? Commissioner Wieski?
Only because you made the motion in the first place.
I did. An adequate supply of housing does not necessarily mean entry-level housing. An adequate supply of housing in this area is for all sizes of housing and all sizes of lots. And we're losing large lots that have the ability to have horses and horse property. I don't think this valley should ever grow out of that.
No applause, please.
No applause, please. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so I have five votes for and two votes against. So Commissioner Griffith and Commissioner Olivas were in opposition. Commissioner Wieski, Commissioner Hawkins, Commissioner Gower, Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Marshall voted for approval of the motion to council to deny. So that motion carries five to two, and this will be sent to council with a recommendation for denial. And for those of you in the audience, Claudia, do we have an idea of when this is going to find its way to council?
Claudia's in planning manager. It would be March.
At one of the March meetings?
At one of the March meetings.
Okay.
It will be renoticed.
It will be renoticed for those of you. So it will go to council?
That would be the regular schedule.
Okay. Okay. With that, I'm going to move on to item number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Can we wait until everybody clears out?
Okay, yeah. Pause for a second there and gather your thoughts. Think about exactly how you want to present this.
Okay, on the 24th of January, the TDMRPA met, and it was, the first item on the agenda was Coyote Crossing that was approved. B on the agenda was the regional performance review and final action on the objection submitted by the City of Reno regarding the Etterveria properties. That took a six-three vote, and that, I believe that ended everything. Is that right, Claudia? And that was the final say on the Etterveria property.
Final say for the planning commission. It will go to the governing board on appeal.
Right.
Correct. Just want to clarify.
And I haven't got the date yet on our next meeting.
February 13th.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, item number eight, staff announcements.
Thank you very much. The last council meeting, the text amendment for public meal facilities was approved by City Council. That needs to still go for second reading, for adoption. We also had the amendment, or, I'm sorry, the appeals for the Mark Twain Avenue building permit, which I gave you a little briefing on last time. It was an appeal of a building permit by a neighbor and an appeal of a tree removal permit by Councilwoman Breckus. The building permit appeal was not supported by council, so they upheld the administrator's decision as well as the hearing officer's decision. And then the appeal by Jenny Breckus was withdrawn, was withdrawn by Jenny Breckus. So those ones are done. And that's all I have. Oh, and thank you for your participation in the joint meeting. I think it went very well. We got a lot of great feedback. Clarion was very happy with the direction, and we are excited to move forward and we'll keep you posted on when we expect to see some draft wording to you.
One question to the manager. What was the outcome? I know you said it was the administrator's decision on Mark Twain. What was the actual outcome there? Continue to build the house and?
Correct. Yeah, so the building permit was approved and upheld, and the encroachment permit was approved, upheld by the hearing officer that was not appealed to City Council, and the tree removal permit continued on. The trees were removed back in November.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a comment on the joint meeting. Thank you to staff for setting it up with, both setting it up for us and then as having to do my side, thank you for setting us all up on one side of the table and council up on the other. It made it much easier to try to wrangle discussions.
Excellent.
So that was, that was well received. Item number nine, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Commissioner Hawkins?
One thing said during our meeting, joint meeting last week, and they're still trying to push us to get the availability to make decisions on annexation and abandonment. I don't know. Is that going to come to fruition someday?
Yes, I mentioned that last time, that that's being addressed in Title 18.
Okay.
Under procedures.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, item number 10.
Future agenda items?
Oh, sorry.
Apparently, we lack the necessary skills for training. So I don't know if we should be agendizing future training sessions.
On how to read a fiscal analysis? Or what did you want the training on?
I think it was, I think it was, there was some hydrology.
Flood control. It wasn't fiscal, it was flood control.
Specific types of hydrological calculations, if I remember correctly.
That's what it was, yes.
Item 10, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forums on this item?
I do not.
So anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close that, bring it back to item 11, and look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Good night.
Good night.